All right, we'll go ahead and get started. Good morning, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to the Town of Lexington Plant and Commission meeting. This is our normal monthly meeting for January. However, we are having it on Thursday, January 30th of 2020. The meeting is being broadcast live and will air several times on the Town's informational channel 1301. I'm Keith Frost, your Plant and Commission Chair, and I will ask the other members to please introduce themselves.
Good morning, I'm Frank Berry.
Good morning, Sammy Hendricks.
Good morning, I'm Brian Amick.
Good morning, Roscoe Kaufman.
Good morning, Jarrett Harrelson.
Good morning, I'm Jamie Feit.
Kathy Manas, Town Council.
Ron Williams, Town Council.
All right. At this time, I'll ask Vice Chair Berry if he will lead us into invocation.
Let us pray. Heavenly Father, thank you for this day. Thank you for the bright sunshine outside. Be with this body as we plan the future of Lexington and also be with those who protect and serve our country and keep us free and keep us safe. In your name we pray.
Amen. Would you please rise and join me in the pledge of allegiance?
(Inaudible). 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 (Inaudible).
All right. At this time, we'll call the meeting to order. First item of business is approval of the meetings from minutes from November 20th of 2019. All right, hold on a second. All right, we got a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Motion in a second. Any discussion? Hearing none, as all those in favor, please raise your right hand. That is unanimous. Thank you very much. All right. First item of new business this morning is sketch plan approval for a revision, an expansion to a project approved on Kaufman Farm Lane. John?
Mr. Chairman, I will be recusing myself from items one and two.
All right. Thank you.
Good morning. I hope everybody enjoyed their Christmas holiday and New Year. It's time to get back to work. Springdale Development obtained approval to construct a 47-unit, age-restricted, single-family development on 17 and 3/4 acres in July of 2018. That project also included a small commercial lot located at the entrance to the subdivision. Since that time, the project has been revised and expanded. Project now includes 81 units on 27.6 acres, and the commercial lot that was originally proposed has been removed. Property added to the development, as well as the commercial lot, will need to be rezoned, which is item two on your agenda today, to be compliant with the zoning ordinance. The allowable density of residential development is determined by the classification of the street that provides access to the property. Kaufman Farm Lane is classified as a local road, which allows six units per acre, a zero lot line or cluster development. The proposed development will have 2.9 units per acre. Properties with PR2 zoning do not have a minimum lot size, as long as the homes can meet the minimum setbacks and driveway requirements. This subdivision has a minimum lot size of 6,000 square feet. The average lot size is 6,542 square feet, and the maximum lot size is 15,700 square feet. Developer is proposing a 20-foot front yard setback, 20-foot rear yard setback, and a five-foot side yard setback. Town's land development ordinance requires at least 20% of the area to be open space, with at least 50% of that open space being active recreation space, with tennis courts, swimming pools, or other approved amenities. This project meets both of these requirements with eight and a half acres of open space, of which 2.8 acres are active space. To meet the active space requirement, the plan includes a natural walking trail, which is shown as 2.1 acres, a community pool, which is a half acre, and a playground, which is 2/10ths of an acre. Access to development will be attained through a single entrance off of Kaufman Farm Lane. An updated traffic study accounting for the additional lots has not been provided for the project. However, since we discussed this previously, we, one of the requirements of the previous 47 lots was to have access to the stoplight in front of Coles. We have received documentation that that was completed. The project appears to meet the zoning and land development regulations, assuming the additional property is rezoned to Protected Residential 2. There are some traffic-related recommendations related to access off of Sunset Boulevard and a proposed traffic calming measures that should be considered, and Randy can elaborate a little bit more on that, if you would.
With the additional lots, we simply, on the previous approval, it was to gain access to the signalized intersection at Coles or Scotland Drive, and because there are operational issues, if you think about that traffic at Kaufman Farm Lane, and so with that request at additional lots, it was discussed with the developer to improve the actual lane assignments at the Coles signal, because there's a existing right turn bay. It has almost no length to it, and so we've discussed with the developer to actually create a standard right turn lane out there, so that that can operate more efficiently, as to mitigate the trips that would be brought on by the additional lots. And then there was a small, I think, inline mini roundabout discussed with the engineer at, I don't know the names of the roads, but basically midway down the primary road, since it's now a direct straight roadway. It was discussed to provide some type of traffic calming measure mid-block, if you will, and they seemed amenable to providing that feature, so.
All right. And from your discussions with the developer, they were amenable to completing the lane constructions up near 378?
Yes, contingent upon, you know, the additional lots, or made part of that phase.
Mr. Chairman, I confirm that before we started as well, so.
All right.
And the traffic circle, Randy was not aware, that has been added to the one that you all have in front of you.
Yes, I just saw that. John, I got two quick questions, and I hesitate to do this, because I know we've talked about this project multiple times, and I'm not sure there's a concern with the project itself. First question is parking. Did we go through, and I can't remember from last time, did we go through how much parking will be provided with each unit as far as garage or space under a 20-foot setback? I'm just concerned about cars in the roadway.
The zoning ordinance requires a single-family residence to provide two spaces for one- and two-bedroom units and three spaces for units that have more bedrooms than that.
Okay.
So when a individual plot plan for a house comes in, we check to make sure that there's enough adequate space in the, either in the garage or the driveway, to accommodate that requirement.
Okay. And the other thing, and I don't want to hit you cold with this, but it just hit me. We talked about this, and this is when we approved it previously, with an age-restricted community, and I'm looking at the amenities and the active space, and we have a pool and a playground. Do we?
Grandkids need a place to play when they come.
And maybe so, and maybe that's the answer, but I'm just, I'm sitting here going, okay, are those the appropriate active green spaces for perhaps a age-restricted community? A pool, certainly, I guess I could understand. I've just, a playground kind of hit me as, are they really going to use that? So grandchildren, I guess, is the answer to that. And it's a small portion of it. So I just, it was just a thought. It just struck me as kind of odd a little bit there, so. But, all right, any other questions from the commission? All right. Do we have a motion?
I do have one question.
Yes.
We, I'd like to confirm that it is, with additional lots, it is still an age-restricted community. Is that correct?
Asked that question to confirm it with Mr. Rockwell, the developer, five minutes ago, and he confirmed that, yes.
Right. Thank you.
All right. Any other questions? Do we have a motion?
So move.
All right. We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
All right. Can, I'll ask a clarifying question if I can. Is your motion contingent upon him completing the improvements at the entrance to Coles as part of this?
Yes.
Yes. All right. Okay with that? All right. So anybody understand the motion? All right. Any questions or discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please raise your right hand. And that is unanimous. Thank you very much. Oh, I'm sorry. Unanimous for those that were voting. We have one abstention. Recusal. All right. Second item is rezoning of parcels associated with that project.
Yeah, it's in here.
Developer for item number one, Springdale Development, has requested to rezone the remaining portions of what I'm calling 191 Kaufman Farm Lane from general commercial and limited commercial to Protected Residential 2. Request is being made to facilitate the development of the subdivision. Properties adjacent to this one are zone general commercial and Protected Residential. And you'll see that I've provided you with a map that shows what the current zoning is and what the proposed.
All right. All right. Any questions? Do we have a motion?
See the buffer from the current commercial building? What's the, trying to see on the map.
The current commercial building is not required to provide a buffer to residential.
No, I was just curious, on the map, is it? I got it now, sorry.
Yeah, as I say, there's an aerial photo in there.
Make a motion to approve.
Got a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
All right. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please raise your right hand. Great. Again, unanimous for those participating. All right. Item three is site plan approval for Howmetta Mortgage Office Park. John?
Howmetta Mortgage has requested site plan approval for a new office park being planned on 2.8 acres located in the 900 block of East Main Street. Project will consist of 15,386 square-foot multi-tenant office building and a 4,000-square-foot building that will be developed at a later date. Access to the site will be through an existing private driveway that is used to access 84 lumber currently. The plan appears to meet all zoning requirements, although there might be some traffic-related matters that we should consider with regard to the driveway into 84 lumber.
All right. Any questions?
Discuss that further if you need.
Okay. Any questions of John? Yes, do you want to, do you want to go over what staff's thoughts for improvement? Sarah, or do you want Randy, too, or?
I think I can handle this one, but Randy's here, in case. What we discussed with the representatives of the project was there is currently a 66-foot right-of-way for the, that exists for the driveway into 84 lumber, and we have suggested that there be an improvement to the entrance there that will provide a left-out, a right-out, and a right-in within the current right-of-way. The intention is everybody leaves work at 5:00. It's going to be difficult for everybody to get out, so having, having both the turn lanes there would be beneficial to the employees that are trying to leave, so.
Absolutely. Especially everyone.
I think there may be some technicalities related to the driveway that the developers can discuss more fully, if necessary, that might create a problem getting that done.
Okay. All right. Any other questions of John or staff? Do we have someone here from the developer that can provide us some information on that effort?
Hello, I'm Hoyt Burnett. I'm the civil engineer on the project. The town has requested that we have, you know, this left-out, right-out, and then an in, which would require the expansion of the existing pavement. The developer is ready, willing, and able to do that. However, the conditions of the easement do not allow for that. They're very specific about the requirements and what we can do in the easement, like plant trees, put irrigation, add a driveway, but they don't talk about rebuilding the road. So, and we've made efforts to get in touch with 84 lumber unsuccessfully. So, I'd like to bring up that we do kind of have access to a light over at the library. I don't know if you have a map with you, but there's a parking lot that goes over to, through the next development, and gets over to a traffic signal crossing the library. So, we'd like to at least consider, you know, not making that a condition. Again, the developer's ready, willing, and able, but it's having some difficulty getting that through 84 lumber. In addition, we've also worked extensively with the town. We understand that should a penny project pass, there's some talk about this access being taken over by the town and made some sort of bypass lane. So we've been very accommodating in allowing for an expansion of the right-of-way and moving our building over a few feet to allow it to build, still be in compliance with the expanded right-of-way. We set the building back in case there's a deceleration lane on East Main. So we've made efforts to be accommodating for requests of the town with John and Randy, so. If you've got any questions, we've got the contractor here, as well as the owner. You've got questions for him?
I do have.
He can speak more, so maybe some information regarding 84 lumber.
I do have two questions, I guess. First, is 84 lumber giving you indications that they're opposed to it, or they just aren't responding? Because I can't imagine an improvement to the existing drive that now provides three lanes and some, perhaps a better ingress and egress is objectionable.
And we agree. Several months ago, the owner made efforts to try to purchase some additional property with 84 lumber, and just, we got no response whatsoever. And so that's our fear, is that we're going to be ready, willing, and able, but yet unable to contact them and get them to agree. Yeah, sure. Go ahead.
I'm Tripp Davis. I'm one of the owners of the project, and we have reached out to 84 lumber. They have not told us no. It's, they haven't told us yes. And if they, we've got three ways that we can go about this. One is we can, through the original agreement, it says that there's a shared expense in the improvement and maintenance of this road, and it's broken down percentages based on the acreage of each of the projects. And 84 lumber, being the biggest acreage of the track, has the lion's share of it, and so I don't remember the exact number. It's 60% or 70% of the cost of road stuff. The estimated cost for this project, for adding that extra lane, is $20,000 to $30,000. So our first request is, will you share in the expense, because we're all going to benefit from it? You'll benefit coming out of the existing office complex. You'll benefit coming out of 84 lumber. We'll benefit coming out of there. We all benefit. Will you share in it? If they say no to that, then we'll say, well, fine, we'd like to pay for it. We'll just, we'll just do it. And if they say no to that, then the easement calls for us going to arbitration. We're willing to go to arbitration on it. If we fail at arbitration, then we won't be able to do it, and there's, our hands are tied on it. But our intention is to do it, but we don't, you know, we're going to have 67 parking places. We have 25 employees who come to work every day for our office, and then there are two other offices. This is, to some degree, in talking with the planning department, this, it's a, it's not an intrusion on public spaces, this is a convenience matter to us, as much as it is, you know, getting out into the public. We want it, and we're willing to do it. We're willing to ask nicely. We're willing to pay for it. We're willing to go to arbitration to have it done. Our request is so that we can be in process on our building, that this just not be one of the conditions that be placed on us, that we can't move forward without this. But we are, we are willing to try and continue to pursue it. We're just trying to do it through the appropriate channels, and it's just not moving as fast as we would like for it to.
Okay. Interested. Um, I guess, before you, before you leave, I got one other question, and then we'll see who else has what. The back building that's proposed, what proposed use would you have for that?
I think it would just be office space.
Um, our company obviously does mortgages. We've got an agreement with a tenant that's going to do real estate closings, a law firm. We've got a tenant that's in place to do, this is for the front building. We've got a tenant in place that does homeowner's insurance. Our hope and discussions thus far have been something related in the professional housing-related field, but it would be something that would be user-friendly to the mix that we've got there. I don't, I don't want to overcommit or overpromise on anything, but it's, I would say, every intention is for it to be consistent with what we're doing in the front building.
Okay. I just, seems like meeting space had been thrown out as a possible option, and I guess that's why I was just asking if you, yes, if you had any thoughts on what that might be.
Our, no, that's not been, just not been a thought of ours. We have, the only meeting space that we have is in our, in the 15,000-square-foot main building. There's going to be a lower basement level, and there's going to be like a 1,200-square-foot meeting area that we'll use for hosting functions related to education and such, both for us and the closing attorney will both use that space for educating our staffs, real estate agents, and having internal events. But there's, there's no for-revenue, for-profit event space that's been discussed between us for anything else.
Okay. I just, my concern was, if you're going to be, you've got existing, I guess, Building One, and it's going to be internal, your folks, your offices, but if you're going to have a space where you're bringing in significant numbers of people, then that, that does affect the desire for the improvements at the, at the entrance.
That is a misunderstanding.
Okay.
And as far as, like, for future space, our plan is to come out of ground with that building as a part of the whole Phase 1 of this. So it was, we're planning to build a 4,000-square-foot shell, rough-in, and it's been, we filled the first three bays in the big building very, very quickly. We've already had discussions, you know, significant discussions with people about the back space, so I do expect that to happen as a part of all, all in one time, as part of one project. But the users that we've discussed back there would have, you know, for a 2,000-square-foot bay, they might have, on a typical time, you know, four, five, or six people there at one time, in their professional office-type situations.
Okay. So you are going to go ahead and develop that building now, not at a later date?
It is the plan to come out of the ground with it during the, our hope is that the construction period is less than a year from this point, and that rather than having construction of a shell going on and having that go over the paving, we want to get everything done and then have everything tied down, the landscaping tied down, so that we don't disturb that at a later phase.
I understand. All right. Any additional questions?
Mr. Chairman, I have a question for these gentlemen. What would it do to your schedule if you withdrew this this morning, to come back next month or a later time to continue to try to get some answers from the neighbor there?
We're hurting bad for space right now. We're at 426 South Lake. We have 25 people coming to work. We have 25 parking places. We're having to have our staff work from home on alternating days in order to accommodate our space. We are already at the point where we're going to have to do everything we can not to move our office to a temporary space in the interim. It would be, it would just add, we're already inconvenienced because of our growth. We've gone from employing three employees to having 25 employees in a three-year period, so it, growth, and growth continues. We have offers out to hire three more people to come in, so it's, it would be an inconvenience. We request that we be allowed to go ahead and get started on our project. We're not going to slow down our pursuit of that, and it would, whatever matter it is, I believe it'll have, unless it goes to arbitration, I don't know how long that process lasts, but if it's playing, if it's playing nice, whether they share in the expense or whether we pay for it ourselves, it'll be resolved long before we move in under any circumstances.
Okay. Any other questions?
There was some discussion, I don't remember which member of the planning team it was, that, that our CO be contingent upon a review of us following through on these steps, and I'm perfectly comfortable with that.
Okay. All right. And I'll ask John or Brad, I'm not sure who. Brad, how would we, how would, how would we couch that? Would that be a staff review of the efforts that have been taken, or would that come back to this group for discussion at that point? He's, he's saying that they would be willing to have the issuance of a CO contingent upon making all efforts possible on the driveway improvements with, with 84 lumber. Is that even, I'm not even sure if that's possible for us, but if it is, how do you do that?
COs granted on a staff level.
Yeah.
But I mean, for you guys, you ought to say it, at least say it.
Okay.
It's your wishes.
All right.
If that is needed.
Okay. All right. Any additional questions? All right. Do we have a motion?
I make a motion to approve with adding the agreement that you mentioned for staff approval during the CO, I guess, road for lane improvements or access.
All right. Should we have a motion and a second? Do we have any further discussion?
Mr. Chairman, I have one more question. Sorry to delay things here, but a comment was made earlier that you all had access, we will have access over to the traffic signal at the library.
Well, it's kind of unofficial. There's not a access easement, but you can go through the parking lot and get to the light where you can to.
But do you have crawl easement access?
No.
Okay.
No. But unofficially, you could get there.
Okay. So, so potentially, they have every right to keep your folks from accessing through their property to get to that stoplight? John, can you answer that?
I think that would be a violation of zoning requirements for connectivity for them to do that.
Yes, connectivity. Okay. All right. So there is access, even though it may not be written specifically to them?
It is not specific to them, that's for sure.
Yes, okay. All right. All right. So the, so the motion is for a site plan approval with a notation that the Planning Commission staff would request that town staff review efforts taken to complete the road improvements prior to issuance of a CO. All right. So just so everybody's clear. All right. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please raise your right hand. That is unanimous. Thank you very much, gentlemen. All right. Last item of business for this morning is annexation of property at 304 Montrose Drive. John?
This is easy. This one's easy.
Don't say that.
It should be easy. Felicia Kenny and Romy Cord own a parcel located at 304 Montrose Drive and have petitioned to annex the property. A single-family home is located on the site. Properties in town near this one are zone Protected Residential 2. Montrose Drive and Asa Rose Lane are classified as RL4 roads. Due to the surrounding conditions and the use of the property, the same zoning and road classification are recommended for this parcel.
All right. How many, how many more do we have in this neighborhood? Do you know?
Hundreds.
Hundreds. I mean, I know we started with, what, five and six, or six and seven phases?
Oh, how many that are in the, that are left to be built?
Not in town, yeah.
Oh, the.
Not in town.
Half the subdivision is not in town.
Okay.
Roughly half of it. The reason we proposed annexing this property is the way the phases are broken up. If you notice on the aerial map. If you notice on the aerial map in your packet, this is a corner lot. Everything on that side of the street is already in town, except for that one.
Okay.
So for ease of service delivery and whatnot, we thought it was prudent to propose that one for annexation.
Okay. All right, let's hope. So I guess you guys are looking at this as property changes hands? I guess it looks like that's what happened here?
Yes.
Okay. All right, do we have discussion? We have a motion?
Motion.
We have a motion, Frank, you have a second?
Second.
We'll give it to you, since you, we gave it to you. We have record you were here and participated. All right, do we, do we have any more, any discussion on it? All right, all those in favor, please raise your right hand. That is unanimous as well. All right, I think that concludes all of our new business for today.
I have one more thing that I wanted to do at the beginning, but he wasn't in the room. I just wanted to introduce our new building official. As you all know, Charlie Thomas retired last month, and Brent Hawkins has been with us for eight years. He's very well-qualified in building trades and certifications and that type of thing. He's done a great job the last couple of weeks, getting his feet on the ground, and so I wanted to make sure you all knew who he was, and if you have any building questions, that's the guy to talk to.
Awesome, great, welcome. Sure we will be calling. All right, anything else for the good of the commission? Frank, there was a traffic committee meeting yesterday, John, solve it?
We, we're trying. Randy did present the traffic committee with some optional improvements to 378 and I-20. Corley Mill and I-20, I'm sorry. Well, Corley Mill, 378, and I-20. We're looking forward to see which direction we head with that. Very costly project, as he showed us yesterday. That's not it.
All right.
Mr. Chairman, question?
Yes, sir.
I don't know who asked, maybe Brett. Where are we on the signaling, signaling process?
So we've completed Phases One and Three. Phase One was all the downtown lights and some of the stuff that was out of the core of 378 where we needed to acquire right-of-way. Phase Three was everything from Jenny Lane to the hospital. And Phase Two, that bid was opened about six months ago, and it's under construction, and we hope in the next 18 months for that project to wrap, that's being managed by DOT.
And that's from Highway Six to?
That essentially, there's a couple of caveats to that, but essentially, it's every light in town, once that's complete, will be done. There are a few lights that are standalone, that are far enough out of the main drag, that they're not part of that, but essentially, it's every light in town, every signal in town.
All right, any other questions? Anything from council?
Oh, yes, sir, thank you, Mr. Chairman. We got some good things happening in the town of Lexington. Our next council meeting is Monday, February the 3rd, at 6:30, and Mayor Madougal will be giving his state-of-the-town address, so we'd love to have all of you here with us in council chambers. If you can't be with us, be sure to watch that on TV. So you'll see our mayor's thought of our town for the next year. On Sunday, February the 9th, is the Chili Cook-Off at the Ice House Amphitheater. And then on March the 14th, we're going to have the Shamrock Parade downtown. And then starting on Thursday, April the 9th, and going through Thursday, May the 7th, we begin our spring concert series at the amphitheater. And I know many of you have been to some of them, if you haven't, you sure need to go. We're going to have the Finesse Band, the Band of Oz, the Reggie Sullivan Band, Whiskey Run, and the Tams. So it's a great lineup. I hope to see you on Thursday night, starting April the 9th, at the Ice House Amphitheater. And then on Saturday, April 25th, will be Kids' Day at Virginia Hilton Park. So as always, I would like to thank you for what you do for the Planning Commission. This is possibly my last Planning Commission meeting. For as long as I can remember, the Planning Commission liaison was held by the most senior member of our council. Roscoe, you remember, Jim Lowman had it, and then our friend Richard Thompson had it. Our mayor pro tem, Hazel Livingston, is our longest-serving member of our council, but she started our traffic committee over 15 years ago, and is the liaison for that committee. As the second-longest-serving member of council, I've had the honor to serve as your liaison for over eight years. Our four new members of council had decided that this is not how they want to do it anymore. So we are changing the way that we have our liaisons appointed. So it's been an honor to serve with each of you. Thank you for what you do as you plan the future of Lexington, to make our town a great place to live, to work, and to go to school. I hope I will continue to be with you, but if not, thank you for the service that you give to the citizens of the town of Lexington. And it's been an honor to work alongside you for all these years. Thank you.
Thank you, and on behalf of the commission, we sincerely appreciate your support. I know when I go to council meetings, Kathy is singularly pointing out us all the time and the work that we do, and appreciative of it, and we appreciate you, and thank you very much. And I'm sure whoever we're working with, we will work well with, but don't fear, we will still reach out and seek your advice.
Thank you, I appreciate it. I'm always here for you.
Thank you very much. All right, anything else for the good of the commission? All right, hearing none, we have a motion to adjourn. Second?
Second.
All those in favor, please raise your right hand. All right, and we are adjourned. Thank you very much for watching the town election and planning commission in action. Again, this meeting was held at 8:00 AM Thursday, January 30th, 2020. Will be aired several times throughout the week. On behalf of the planning commission, I wish you a good day.